Los Amigos just concluded for its weekly Wednesday meeting. And one of the topics that was brought up for discussion is this particular article. That was originally printed in the LA Times, but that's behind a paywall. And generally, I learned this from Michael Richards. You can find it reprinted on other publications. So fortunately, one of the conveners of our meeting dug this second version up. And so this is presumably an exact reprint of the LA Times version of the article. And I've been attending Los Amigos since late 2018. I've never lived in Anaheim, but I've always had a special connection to Anaheim because Disneyland is there. I always had Disneyland passes for me and my son throughout his early childhood. I would get like the full pass where we had 365 days a year, right? And so the city is meaningful to me and I definitely have a lot of, you know, I've walked blocks up there for Dr. Moreno. I've been attending Los Amigos for five years now, almost. But also, I was asked to become the alternate to Anita Nariana for Central Committee. And because she had like a family obligation at that November meeting. And so I was her alternate for a year on Central Committee. And one of the first things she did was ask me to vote for the endorsement of Jordan Brandman. And he was at the time trying to get endorsed by the Democratic Party of Orange County for, I think it was a Board of Education race. And several people, I'm not going to name names, came up to me and asked me to change my vote. And I said, look, I have to do what she's asked me to do. Otherwise, I'm going to lose my ability to participate as an alternate. And what I was able to do was they started voting on a really sort of ranked choice voting system in order to try and prevent the endorsement from happening. And so I was able to help my progressive comrades in that vote because I had not been given any clear instructions in that regard. But I did as she instructed, as I always did, because I was her alternate. And so therefore, I had to vote in her direction. But the reality is, she told me that he's a good friend of hers. Okay, birds of a feather. An Anaheim Politician's Fall Reveals Disney Exec and Secret Cabal's Power. By Peter Hawke. As an Anaheim City Council member, Jordan Brandman enjoyed relationships with lobbyists and corporate power brokers that went well beyond cozy. Now, y'all might remember that there is a whole FBI thing going on, that Mayor Sedoux had to resign. Milahat Rafi became an informant and is in her own trouble, apparently, as a consultant, and she's also apparently been causing chaos in Irvine, too. Okay. He was so close to Disneyland's Director of External Affairs that they affectionately called each other twin and traded messages saying they loved each other. Side note, Jordan, I understand, I've been told he's gay. I don't know if this dude is too, or if this is just a bromance. I have no idea what's going on here. A lobbyist representing the city's police officers' union managed investments for, oh my God, for Brandon, more than quadrupling money, the money he had put in. Brandman spent his 40th birthday party blowing out the candles at a sushi restaurant surrounded by friends who often had business before the city council. And when questions about his mental health emerged, really, oh my God. Brandman tried so hard to stay in their good graces that he signed over access to information about his psychological care to a prominent local lobbyist who was also a friend. Oh my God, even. Wow. All right. For his part, Brandman voted to give businesses, they represented hundreds of millions of dollars in tax breaks, did their bidding by voting to replace the city manager and helped approve lucrative contracts for some of their other clients. The role of powerful business interests in Anaheim, home to Disneyland Resort and Angel Stadium, has come under renewed scrutiny amid an ongoing federal corruption investigation that became public last year. FBI affidavits detail strong alliances between city leaders and several unelected power brokers alleging that a covert, self-described cabal wielded significant influence over the inner workings of Anaheim's government. But just how deep those alliances were, wasn't clear until now. In a series of interviews with the Times, the LA Times, you guys, Brandman provided a rare insider's look at how the city was run from when he became a council member in 2012 to when he stepped down in disgrace two years later, or two years ago. Sorry, two years ago. That's much longer than two years later. 2012, I mean, fact that he was, he was there for nine years. He got, all right. His account, along with texts, emails, and city records reviewed by the Times, describe relationships that went much deeper than the typical transactional ties that often bind lobbyists and government officials. Former Anaheim Council Member Jordan Brandman provided a rare insider's look at how the city was run, describing relationships between city leaders and unelected power brokers that went much deeper than typical transactional ties that often bind lobbyists and government officials. Just like tying this back to the fact that I had to make that vote for Anita. The reason I am no longer her alternate is because I made some public posts on Twitter, and I didn't even have a very large following on Twitter. Only had a couple hundred people following me. But I made a public post about how I did not support Harley Ruda for the congressional seat, which he ultimately had to suspend his campaign because Katie Porter was going to run in that district. But because I had said that he had been supported by the convo couch, that he had lied to us about his position on Medicare for All, that he had asked PDA to pull down his application basically for that endorsement and had retracted his position on Medicare for All. Because I said, and I used, I used a little foul language. I put that on Twitter in front of a very small audience. I started getting phone calls. You guys look shady as shit, okay? Oh my God, even. Leaders of the cabal and other city lobbyists were Brandman's political allies and advisors. The shoulders he cried on. He told them he loved them in text messages reviewed by the Times, and they wrote that they loved him too. We all drinking while you're communicating to each other? I mean, I love you. Really? I mean, these are supposed to be professional working relationships, right? Fuck's sake, you guys. His tenure on the council ended in scandal after violent and misogynistic texts he since became public. Even then, it wasn't the electorate or government officials who forced his hand, but a group of his one-time friends and allies who met behind closed doors with Brandman to push him to quit. I'm fairly certain it was a group of Deepak people. Probably a bunch of Deepak people. That is my speculation, allegedly. In 2012, Brandman was a 32-year-old business-friendly Democrat when he was elected to the council on a wave of campaign cash from Disney and other corporate interests, as well as support from construction trade unions. His election secured a majority on the council that was favorable to tax subsidies for major businesses. Several months after assuming his seat, he joined other council members in approving a controversial 158 million hotel tax subsidy for the developer of two four-star hotels. The subsidy was championed by the head of the city's powerful Chamber of Commerce. And this, this goes into the FBI investigation of like how they were basically doing this. The most dominant establishment in the city, Disneyland Resort, wielded influence through its Director of External Affairs, Carrie Nicola. Nicella? I don't know. Nocella? I have no idea. Brandman said he met Nocella at a council meeting years before he was elected, and the two hit it off. You go, girl. The pair shared the same March birthday, and months before Brandman's election, he said Nocella gave him her father's Mickey Mouse watch shortly after his death, telling Brandman that her father would have wanted him to have it. You know, they're not that expensive. I used to have one in the eighties. Nocella said, but you're not supposed to be giving gifts to public officials. Okay. Nocella said in a statement to the Times that her mother gave the watch to Brandman shortly after the death of Nocella's father, whom she said Brandman knew well. After the election, Brandman said he remained close friends with Nocella and another Disney-aligned council member, Chris Murray. He had dinner with Nocella and Murray and their husbands three or four times a week and attended pool parties with them, he said. Who the hell has, like, you're literally, you are a council person and you have that much time to dedicate to this guy? I mean, I don't even have that much time. Like, I'm on medical leave. I can't even fucking spend that much time with people. Holy shit. Oh my God. All right. Nocella and Murray vacationed in Europe together shortly after the council women, woman won reelection in 2014. "I trusted Chris and Carrie with my life. They were my sisters," Brandman said. In 2015, okay, so I'm kind of getting this, like, he's, he's, from what I was told, he's gay. I don't know if this is true or not. But he sounds like the kind of dude who is totally looking to surround himself with women. Sounds like, allegedly. In 2015, Brandman voted for a deal in which Disney promised to expand its resort, and the city agreed that for the next 45 years, any revenue obtained from taxing Disneyland's admission tickets would go back to the company. Oh, that's interesting because they have a really good deal on the parking structure, too, right? The next year, Brandman was part of the council majority that approved a 267 million tax break for Disneyland's planned luxury hotel. Wow, one of the images showed up. Okay. Brandman recently defended his votes, saying he used his leverage as the council's swing vote to successfully push Disney to guarantee union jobs, wages, and benefits for construction workers on the planned hotel. I don't know that this is necessarily true. I'm not going to say, I'm not going to name names, but one of the people who asked me not to endorse him was a prominent labor leader of hotel employees. So I don't, I don't, I mean, obviously, he was interviewed for this article. I don't know if they actually like interviewed anybody else, right? Disney asked the city to cancel the two tax agreements shortly before a ballot measure approved by city voters required businesses in Anaheim's resort area receiving such assistance to pay their employees a 15 per hour minimum wage. By the way, they were asking for a $25 minimum wage earlier this year. And they were paying their canvas staff 20 with no benefits, no safety protocols, no written job descriptions, no reporting to OSHA when people got injured. The company declined to comment for the story. Like, there's no, there's no perfect person in this story. I'm just being real with you. In November 2016, Brandman lost his bid for reelection by 72 votes. He got a new job working for a consulting firm co-owned by a prominent lobbyist who did work in Anaheim. Would that potentially be Milahat Rafi? Is that, is that who it was? Brandman's defeat meant a majority of the city council now opposed tax subsidies for Disney and other major corporations. Aiming to restore its influence, Disney spent heavily on the next election. The resort poured more than 1.2 million into a political action committee that supported Brandman and two other candidates in the 2018 council races, helping to elect a new majority of members sympathetic to Disney. The company also backed Harry Sedoux, who was elected mayor. Sedoux eventually exercised near-total authority over decision-making and unelected power brokers, helped manage the mayor and other council members, Brandman said. Oh my God, Leo, this is, you know what? I'm glad that he's, I'm glad he's a rat. I'm glad he's a rat. Among those power brokers, he said, were Taunt Ament, then the president of the city's Chamber of Commerce, and Jeff Flint, a lobbyist who has represented the Angels and Disney and who shared offices with the Chamber. Nice. In a criminal complaint filed last year against Ament, the FBI alleged that he and Flint were ringleaders of a covert group that appeared to exert significant influence over the city of Anaheim. They arranged secret retreats for power brokers and held so much sway that Flint drafted a script for the mayor about a bond measure with the help of Nocella, whom the FBI described as a cabal ringleader to some extent. Nocella mocked Sedoux's delivery of the script according to an affidavit filed with the criminal complaint. "Sedoux reads your script so poorly," Nocella wrote in a text message to Flint reviewed by the FBI. Sedoux, an alleged member of the cabal, resigned as mayor last year after being accused in another FBI affidavit of a slew of misdeeds in connection with a now-dead deal for the city to sell Angel Stadium, home of Major League Baseball's Angels. Well, if you, if you want to get real technical, it's the Los Angeles Angels of Anaheim. And by the way, nobody in Orange County likes that at all. To a company controlled by the team's owner. Sedoux has not been charged and denied wrongdoing. Ament agreed to plead guilty to four felonies. Flint has denied wrongdoing. The federal documents do not accuse Nocella of criminal wrongdoing, and her attorney said her client is not a target of the investigation. Well, maybe. Maybe not. Allegedly. Sedoux, Flint, and Ament declined to comment. Not every member of the council was viewed as part of the cabal. One of the federal affidavits quotes a wiretapped conversation in which Flint tells Ament that he wants to discuss at an upcoming retreat, "How much do we trust?" One of the council members, oh. Whom the affidavit referred to as "Elected Official Five," Brandman said. He believed he was elected official five. From other details in the affidavit, he said he was not invited to the retreat. Well, I bet Dr. Moreno wasn't either. Come on. You had tighter relationships with these people than he did. Holy shit. In April 2020, Brandman said Flint told him during a phone call that he would have to vote to push out then-city manager Chris Zapata, who was opposing a plan backed by Ament to give more money to a tourism program. Flint, Brandman said, told him the vote would decide who was or, and who wasn't on the team. Brandman said he liked Zapata, and they worked well together. But Brandman said opposing the council majority on an important vote like this could result in them ostracizing him and risk his board seat appointment at the Orange County Water District, which was paying him more than $30,000 a year. He acknowledged, this is, I was told, initially, when I first got into politics, I was told by one of my local city council members, Tiffany Ackley, that basically, city council members in my city only get like $500 a year. But I have since learned that there's a lot of additional money in participating in appointments and subcommittees. And that information was excluded from me, right? So this is how they make their money, is by all these appointments and obviously, it didn't take a lot of effort if he was able to like have like dinner and pool parties every night of the week, right? He acknowledged he was already earning at least $118,000 consulting for the Building Industry Association of Southern California and more than $27,000 as a council member. Okay, so Anaheim has more money than Luis Oviedo, apparently. Brandman agreed to cast the vote Flint wanted. "It's a vote I'm not proud of," Brandman said. Well, you know what, sister? I feel the same way. I'm not proud of voting to endorse you for Board of Education when it was so clear to me that every progressive in the room disagreed with that vote. Thanks a lot for that, Anita. In addition to his salary, Brandman said he was also profiting from an investment managed by Peter Mitchell, the prominent lobbyist who had hired Brandman after his reelection defeat in 2016. Brandman, who stopped working for Mitchell when he won election again in 2018, so I guess there's like a two-year grief, so it wasn't a total of nine years, it was like seven years, right? Said he had pitched in $2,500. I think that might have been the campaign donation limit for a direct, like, without setting up a PAC, right? In 2019, Brandman voted in favor of one of Mitchell's clients, a Shell gas station whose owner wanted to block approval for a proposed Arco station nearby. Yeah, we don't want competition, right? Public lobbying filings show Mitchell contacted Brandman about the client. At the time, Brandman denied that his vote on the gas station appeal was a conflict of interest, saying that he vetted the matter with the city attorney. Today, he says he regrets his vote because it created the perception of a conflict. Mitchell did not respond to requests for comment. Mitchell also represented the city's police union. And I wonder if Brandman's made a deal. I wonder if he's made a deal with the FBI at this point. Because we know that Milahat did. That's why she was an informant in this situation. All right. Mitchell also represented the city's police union. And in 2020, Brandman voted in favor of a union contract that granted 14% in raises to rank-and-file officers over six years. I'm fairly certain that a resolution to ask our politicians to not accept any donations from police unions came up a couple years ago at the Democratic Party of Orange County. I don't know if it was ever passed, if they were able, ever able to agree on the language behind that resolution, but it's certainly been a point of contention, and clearly, we can see why, right? Meanwhile, his investments with Mitchell were performing well. He more than quadrupled his money by the end of 2020 and received $11,000, he told the Times. He celebrated his windfall with a text to another lobbyist in December 2020. Also got some great news from Pete, that investment I went in on cashed in. Yay! On March 11th, 2020, Brandman dined on sushi for a joint birthday party with Nocella, the Disney executive. A video from the event shows the pair blowing out candles on a cake together. By the way, that, like, if you look at the timeline on that, that's like literally when we went into the pandemic, right? Like, Governor Newsom told us that we had to stay at home, that we needed to flatten the curve. Dude is blowing out birthday candles with Nocella. Okay, okay, Brandman. In the background were Flint and Ament. Okay. The next day, Disneyland announced it would close. See, see what I'm saying? Literally happened, like, the next day, Disneyland announced it would close due to the spread of the new coronavirus. City Hall followed days later. I was already working from home at this point. Fuck's sake, you guys. Brandman went into isolation in his apartment for months. His physical condition declined, and a thrombosis in his leg along with a circulatory deficiency was blocking oxygen flow to his brain, he said. Was blocking oxygen flow to his brain, he said. That's pretty dramatic. Okay. His behavior grew increasingly erratic, which he blamed on his medical condition. On December tenth twenty twenty, a firm providing his council office with administrative and other services. Terminated its contract accusing Brandman in a letter to the city manager. Of making comments of racist, of a racist and misogynistically charged nature. The firm's owner, Daniel Fiero. Said in the letter that one of his employees recently told him that Brandman a year earlier. So this is before the health issues escalated, right? Had been ranting and raving that he wanted to walk into City Hall and blow people's heads off. Because they were not complying with his directives, alternately yelling and sobbing. But that's cool, you all still have Anita Narayana as a representative on Central Committee. In my district. Nice work, guys. Brandman initially told the Times, he didn't recall making a comment about shooting people at City Hall. But it was something I would have said at the time. In a later interview. He denied making it, claiming the employee would have reported it earlier. He denied making the misogynistic and racist comments alleged in the letter. Well, you know what? You can deny all you want, but ultimately screenshots came out, right? That this is exactly the kind of language you use, right? Shortly after the letter was emailed, Brandman. Said he was awoken by police officers knocking on his ap- apartment door. They told him that friends had been trying to get in contact but hadn't been able to reach him, so were worried. One of them was Todd Priest, another city lobbyist who had gone to Brandman's apartment. Priest told him he knew about Fiera. Terminating the contract for the administrative help and was worried about him. Brandman and Priest had been friends for years, Brandman said. And he had previously voted in favor of one of Priest's clients. God damn you guys. This is what municipal government looks like, you guys. Voted in favor of. One of Priest's clients regarding matters including a transportation contract and a land sale. Brandman denied that his friendship with Priest had anything to do with his votes. Then why were you fucking hobnobbing with lobbyists? Oh my god. A few days after the police visit, Priest and Flint told Brandman on a Zoom call. That he needed to take a leave of absence, Brandman said. He agreed and unofficially took a couple of weeks off. Brandman signed a medical release granting Priest the right to access information about his psychological care. Emails reviewed by the Times show. That is so dumbass, Jordan. That is so fucking stupid that you did that. Like literally all you had to do was get a doctor's note and fucking sent, I can't even, oh my god. He said he did so in an effort to show his powerful friends. That he's still, he was still capable of serving on the council. All you needed was a fucking doctor's note. Oh my god. I did just leave a voicemail for Brandman psychologist, Priest wrote in one text. Along with three heart emojis. Very serious. Physical records Brandman shared with the Times showed that a friend, Brandman said. This was a reference to Priest, suggested he start taking Prozac. Folks, please don't offer medical advice to your friends. If you're not a fucking doctor, shut your mouth. Just be a supportive, listening ear. In one text, Brandman told Priest, he wanted to touch base and included a screenshot. Of his prescription for the antidepressant. In another, he told Priest he had been approved. Had been approved the medicate, I think you're supposed to be for the medication, but okay. That's awesome, Jordy. So proud of you, Priest wrote back. Nochella also remained supportive. For their birthday that year, she sent him a Mickey Mouse birthday card addressing him as twin. My god, this is so weird. I gotta pause for a second. I'm, I'm getting dry mouth reading this. Okay. So keeping in mind, these are people who have actual professional business relationships with each other. But they're also crossing all kinds of lines for how they're influencing Anaheim city government, right? Um, who's, who's getting money, who's getting tax breaks? Um, there was all kinds of corruption going on up there. So this is uh like a, like either a fellow city council person or um. Or a lobbyist or something, but this should not be going on right now. Love you more than you know, she wrote, drawing a heart. Despite the therapy, Brandman became married in another crisis after an outburst. In June twenty twenty one, text messages leaked. In which Brandman disparaged another city council member using crude and sexist language. He called her a derogatory term for women and said he would rip her effing tits off. It's funny that they have to, they, they wanted to um censor the F-bomb, but not tits, right? Okay. Some city activists had already begun organizing a recall against Brandman. And now ramped up their efforts, the local chapter of the Democratic Party. Um, of Orange County. And the Anaheim City Council were planning to hold separate votes on whether to censure Brandman over his comments. They did more than that, let's be real. On August third, Flint called Brandman into a meeting at his office. Attending was a cauldron of Anaheim's power elite. In addition to Priest and Flint, there was Murray. The former council member who was now working as a government affairs and crisis communications consultant. Ernesto Medrano, uh, a construction trades union leader. And Melahat Rafi, then California Democratic Party Secretary. And a political consultant who was working for Brandman. Nice work, Melahat. Rafi has since agreed to plead guilty to wire fraud in connection with the federal corruption investigation. God damn it. Like, it's so hard to actually get a seat at the table, you guys. We run fairly and squarely and these are the bullshit people that keep getting elevated in our local party. By the way, I just read in the Democrats of Greater Irvine. That the Live Nation de- deal did get killed. Three to two at Irvine City Council, so kudos to you. Who are actual honest city council members. Fighting against the people working with Melahat and all the bullshit that's going on right now. Alright. Brandman said they demanded he resign by five PM the next day. They told him he needed to step down. From the council for his own good. Well, yeah, I mean, he's telling everybody he's unbalanced, he's depressed, he's. Uh, having outbursts, it's uh, of course he needs to step down. Brandman said he left the meeting concerned that if he did not comply, his job with the Business Industry. Association of Southern California would not be secure. Why would you keep him on anything? He's got all this shit out there of uh, having these outbursts, being incredibly disrespectful. To women and minorities, um, doing shady deals, like why would you keep him on any job? Dude should get completely out of this area of this line of work. Notably absent from the meeting was Nochella. The next day, she texted Brandman and informed him that Murray was her surrogate. And that she would have attended the meeting but was out of town. According to texts reviewed by the Times. Sounds like somebody's trying to create some distance. Oh, no more dinner every night? I've been in constant contact with the team. You should know. The five PM date is real, Nochella wrote. We are all trying to keep attacks against you at bay. You have a chance to control your own destiny. Save your professional career and work on your mental health. Brandman asked her to call him, but she said she was on tour of. A tour of Texas A and A and M University. Oh my god, the way they talk to each other. I don't talk to anybody in my political community like this. Like I've known some of these people for years. I don't like drop an email to the party chair and be like, hey babe. I don't hang out at her house. I don't, you know, I'm not like going out to dinner with her unless it's like an actual campaign event or a political party event. This, this crossing the boundaries is very bizarre to me. Hey babe, I cannot get away from this tour, Nochella wrote. Chris Murray stands ready to chat as my surrogate. Love you. Love you. I never communicate with, like I have so many contacts. Nationwide, but especially concentrated in Orange County and I don't fucking talk to any of them like this. I might drop some F-bombs and stuff, but like I don't see anything, I don't. Oh my god. Brandman told the Times that as he considered his options. He was reassured by Priest and the former chief executive of the Building Industry Association. That he would be able to keep his job even if he resigned from the council. Okay, so you wanna have a dangerous employee on your hands? Nice work. You wanna have. An employee that could potentially bring a sexual harassment suit against you. A discrimination suit against you, a racial harassment suit against you. The potential is there, he's put it in writing, there's people who have discussed it, reported it. Wow. I love you and thanks for everything you've done to help me navigate to a healthier place in my life. Brandman said in a text to Priest. Look, if he's struggling with mental illness, I feel for him. But we also have to consider that he was able to rise to power and cause a lot of damage. Um, so you have to protect the public, you have to protect your employees. This is totally crazy. I'm not, I'm sorry, that was the wrong word she used. This is totally inappropriate. He submitted his resignation letter to the Anaheim City Clerk the next morning. Blind copied on the email were Nochella and the attendees of the meeting. The council majority appointed Gloria May. Who had been an advisory committee member of a Disneyland-backed advocacy group in his place. They're districted. And um. Anaheim is one of the city councils that's districted. So it's not like an open race for those positions. So they have to find somebody within their lobbyist group, basically, that lives within the same district as him. In a statement to the Times, Nochella said she considered Brandman a friend and a colleague within the Anaheim community. And she described the group's meeting with him before he resigned. As an intervention by people who were motivated out of ki- the care. Out of care and concern for his physical and mental well-being. That may be the case. Here's a picture of him, y'all. I only got a few more minutes, I don't know, you know what? I might have to do a part two. She said she supported their recommendation for Mr. Brandman to resign from council and focus on recovering and obtaining the medical help. He desperately needed. Priest declined, actually, you know what? I could probably go long because I'm not gonna be clipping it like. Like I have with some of the other videos I do. Priest declined to answer questions about his relationship with Brandman, but gave the Times a statement. Unfortunately, many of us know friends and loved ones who have experienced challenging times. While I strongly condemn his actions and comments. I am grateful for the support Jordan received from his friends. Mental health professionals, law enforcement and others during that time. Yeah, see like when you help the, the law enforcement labor unions, you're probably gonna get a free ride if you're doing dumbass shit. Right? Murray said in her own statement that she attended the meeting with Brandman. For the sole reason of supporting him as a friend. And former colleague. At the time, I was very concerned about his physical and mental health. Jordan sent me several texts following that meeting thanking me for my support and friendship. A day after the meeting, she said, he texted her, please know, I feel at peace because. I'm getting healthier and do not want to jeopardize the progress I've made. Two years on, Brandman expresses regret about a few of his decisions on the council. But maintains that most of his actions were in the interests of the city. Not the lobbyists he counted as friends. He blamed his downfall not on his own behavior. But on the people he said pulled the strings in the city whom he accused of betraying him. I played by the rules, Brandman said in a tearful interview with the Times. And what did they do when I was down? When I was a team player? I'm nothing more than a game foul for the slaughter. Goodbye, Mr. Brandman. Asked if he thought the lobbyists controlled his votes, Brandman at first insisted that wasn't true. You already fucking admitted earlier in the article that you were literally do. Allegedly. But he acknowledged that they had leverage over him at certain points, even influencing some of his medical decisions. He said they exerted tight control over the city behind the scenes. It was a gilded type of arrangement, Brandman said. Where the robber barons come and the senators just say yes. Um, you wanna go a little further with that? You gonna dump some senator names? You wanna talk about which senators? Are you talking about Umberg? You talking about Tom Umberg? You wanna like, you wanna like call out some names here, Jordan? Brandman remains employed as a labor relations director at the Building Industry Association of Southern California. He said he cut off communication with the lobbyists after his therapist told him they were a toxic influence. No kidding. Nochella occasionally sends him a text. On March tenth twenty twenty two, the day before their birthday, Nochella texted him a selfie of them together. Cheek to cheek with broad smiles on a sunny day. She also sent the video of their party at the sushi restaurant like the day before. Like they got the Disneyland closed for lockdown, blowing out the candles. During a coronavirus pandemic together on their birthday. Nice work, you guys. Two years bef- uh, two years ago, before the world and life went to I imagine that's supposed to be shit, right? I just want to wish you a happy birthday tomorrow. I love you. Nochella texted. Brandman never replied. So this was in the LA Times article and by the way, I think it's very interesting that y'all don't find tits. A bad word, but you find the F-bomb and shit bad words, right? The two androgynous profanities, but you go with a very misogynistic. I mean, come on. Okay, it looks like that's the whole thing. Um, this all ties into the FBI investigation into Anaheim to the corruption, like, like I said, it's the corruption behind the uh, relationship behind mayor, mayor Sado uh, with the Chamber of Commerce and this deal they were trying to do to sell Angel Stadium. Um, but it's been going on a lot longer than that. Brandman's do- been doing Disney's bidding for a very long time. I'm really surprised that he put this out to LA Times. Because it's pretty self-incriminating and so in my opinion, allegedly. Um, but it looks to me like he's made some sort of deal with the FBI. Or he's really that mentally incapacitated that he's actually like putting this all on paper. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.